Get started. Let's call to order this meeting, this special session of the Oak Ridge City Council at 7:04 PM on March 24th. I, uh, shall we, shall we dispense with the pledge of allegiance since we're not looking at a flag? That's enough. And just move straight to roll call. Brian, will you call the roll, please?
I sure will. Mayor Holston? Mayor Holston, are you there? Right there on the way back, Council McLoughlin?
Here.
Council Whitney?
Here.
Council Forkham?
Here.
Council Maxfield?
I see her.
Council Kenyon?
Here.
Council Hollitt?
Here.
Council Maxfield, you there?
I'm here, sorry.
Mayor?
I'm here now.
Everyone's here, Mayor.
All right, thank you, everyone. I'm gonna be reminding folks periodically that are maybe logging in or dialing in to be sure and mute their devices. So if you hear noises, that's what we're doing. And it needs to be muted. So additions and corrections or adjustments to the agenda. I just wanted you to know that as far as additions, Rita Dolan, our school superintendent, will be calling in at some point. Sometime around now or in a little bit. When she does, she just wants to give a brief report on the school system. So we're gonna plug her in wherever that comes. And.
I am ready and available whenever you would like me to share.
Wonderful, thank you Rita. So we'll be hearing from her in just a few moments. And then also during council, city council business. We'd like to talk about the governor's executive order and what it needs here in Oak Ridge. So those are the only two additions that I have. Counselors, do you have any other additions?
Kathy, I have several.
Okay. Let's move on then.
Yes.
You know, I, I'm sorry. I think I would like to just add what I'm doing with senior disability services.
Absolutely.
Let's add that.
All right, we'll do that at business from city council also.
Kathy, there's several questions that I have. I wanna, I wanna opportunity to be able to ask.
Sure, let's do that at city council business also.
Okay.
Shall we do that?
Yeah.
Any others?
Brian? Yes ma'am, it's, uh, it's the CA. I'd like to add Agenda 10.1.1, which is approval of a community response plan grant agreement.
Oh, right.
And it was sent out to, uh, to all the council as, with the information about it, the agenda bill and the agreement.
Correct, got it. Thank you, Brian, for that reminder, 10.1. So that'll be under, yeah, got it. So this, the numbering is a little off on the agenda, so don't get confused as we go through here. So those of you that are joining us, be sure and mute your devices as we continue, so we don't hear background noises. Let's go to the consent agenda. We have approval of our minutes from February 20th and March 5th. I will point out that there was a correction and that has been made. Thank you for that correction. I'm assuming Council Kenyon requested it. And, um, yeah, well, it made a big difference, one word made a huge difference.
Yeah, it did.
So, thank you for catching it. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move, oh, consent agenda?
A second. So Bobby, Kenyon made the motion and Bobby seconded it. All in favor? Go ahead, Brian, call him out.
Okay, Forkham, what, Council Forkham?
Aye.
Council Whitney?
Aye.
Council Maxfield? Take that as an aye. Council Hollitt?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Council Kenyon?
Aye.
Council McLoughlin?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, council. Let's move on to business from the city council. If you don't mind at this point, I would like to invite supervisor, gee Rita, I just made you a counselor. Supervisor Dolan to just talk to us for a few minutes about what's going on with the school district and where they are with it. So Rita, if you would like to step up to the mic, go for it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing some time to share. First, I would like to share that we have a new website. It's the same old address, but when you log into that tomorrow morning, you're going to see a new face to it. And information is much easier accessible, much more easy, easy to assess around the COVID and anyway, so check that out. In addition, there's a new app that will stream anything that we put on our website and also on our Facebook pages directly to your phone. So look for that new app and, and download that for up to the minute information from the city this week. So I'd like to share just some general information that we, things we have been working on since the first order from the governor to close schools. When that order came, school districts were tasked with four things. The first thing is to feed our students. We, we take that task very seriously, it's very near and dear. We know that in order for our kids to stay healthy and to recover if they do become ill, we, we need to make sure they have excellent nutrition. And so we have been providing breakfast and lunch in one serving. So we serve lunch and breakfast for the this morning, all in one fell swoop. From 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock each day, we serve from the front of the high school. It's a drive-through, nobody gets out of their vehicles. Our staff take lunches to the people that are in the, kids in the vehicles and they go on their way. We also are serving over at the Baptist church, same, same timeframe, 11 o'clock to 1 o'clock. We are looking at expanding next week, gearing this up a little bit more with the use of our school bus routes to be able to serve to children who are not able to get to either of those sites. So look for that information coming early next week, we're, we're planning to start that service. Meals are served Monday through Friday and therefore any student, not student, I'm sorry, any child in our community who is age one to eighteen. And if a student, we have a student who is over eighteen and these are all in our school district, they also can eat. But any child in our community, one to eighteen. Are there any, I have to stop, pause for a moment, are there any questions about the food service? All right, the, the second mandate from the governor's order is that we provide supplemental educational support. This, this is with the understanding that it would be impossible in this venue for us to provide new instruction in, in any, any way, shape or form. And so we are providing supplemental supports that we'll review and extend the, the instruction that our students have already had. We're working on a, a date to deliver those materials of April 1st. And what we are preparing are learning packets that will be distributed. And more, more information will be coming, we'll be doing robocalls, we'll be calling, calling families and putting information out in our, our usual media, media ways about information for that delivery. Again, we'll be using our bus routes. And for our walking routes, we'll, we'll have another plan in place for getting materials to students who are wounded. The first round of packets will be for three weeks, so that'll give our, our teachers an opportunity to get the next three weeks of information together as they were scrambling the last couple of days before spring break to, to be able to get the information together as, as we were getting information and building it as, as we've been running. Is to be possible childcare providers for medical staff and first responders in our communities. That is something that is in the works across the state. And we have filled out our, our survey for the Oak Ridge School District, has filled out the survey. And in the next 24 hours, we were, we are told every district in the state will be notified if they will be needed to provide childcare for those critical care providers. That childcare would be provided by school district staff. And, and then the fourth mandate is that in order to provide all of these services that we continue to pay our staff to, to, for them to be available to, to carry out these services. So are there any questions about any of those? And I have a little more information I'll share, but I don't, I'm gonna just talk and talk and not give you a chance if, if there's something that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is Council Whitney, can you define what you mean by first responders?
So first responders or medical responders, what, the people who would be served, from my understanding at this time, Council Whitney, would be doctors, nurses, medical staff who are in hospitals, clinics, et cetera, who are treating people who have COVID-19. It would also be for emergency medical personnel who would also need that support.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes, you're welcome, thanks for the question.
Rita, did I hear you say that during this time that schools closed, that you will be paying your employees still?
Yes, all across Oregon, Oregon school employees continue to be paid so that we can provide these critical services. And you know, that, that is something that comes with a great responsibility. And we have talked about this as a staff, our, our responsibility to our community. And in addition to providing these four essential services, our teachers will, as part of the educational piece, they will be checking in with their students every week. And that's a little easier at elementary school because they have a classroom at the high school. The principal and admin is working on determining which groups of kids are assigned to which teachers. That's something that the, they'll be working on as a team on Monday. In addition, our counselors are working on information that will go home in the packets to support families. They will be also posting on our Facebook and our website, information each week that might be helpful for families as, you know, we're all going through this together. Our special ed staff will be contacting students and families by phone, perhaps over internet connections as, as that might be available. We've discovered that about 20% of our, our families do not have access to internet. And some of that, as we know, is simply because there is no internet to be accessed, depending on where you live in our lovely community. And then we'll also be working on professional development. During this time, we have professional development that has, was already planned and has been ongoing around our English language arts curriculum and our math curriculum and implementation of that and mapping out our curriculum. So all of those things will be going on as well as supporting our students.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, so at this time, we have essential staff. Speaking of, I know you're gonna speak, Mayor Holston, to the new order that came about stay home, save lives.
Right.
It doesn't impact us at the school district as, as much. We still are under the mandates of the original order that spoke to schools. But in addition, we, we will be appointing a overseer, if you will, who is going to, in each, each of our buildings, ensure that social distancing and the hand washing and the sanitizing and all of those things that we need to be doing to ensure that those things are going on. Somebody who, who have employees is, could report to and say, I'm concerned about this and bring it to our attention. For the most part, we'll be doing work from home, but there will be some in-person work as we get those packets ready and things like that, so.
Okay, okay. And so you will let us know as far as the city, if, you know, if something changes and you need additional volunteer support, please reach out to us so that we can help push that message.
Thank you very much, and I will certainly take you up on that as, as needed. I've just mentioned that we, one last thing, if I may.
Absolutely.
We have a, okay, thank you. We have a few construction projects that when this was announced, we thought this is a prime opportunity for us to get some things done that won't be disruptive. So you're gonna see some trenching going on around outside for the lighting and security systems and some things like that, so.
Cool.
Just be aware of that.
Okay, that's, that sounds great. Counselors, do you?
Leverage it in case we have.
Counselors, do you have anything you want to add or ask? Okay, all right, Rita, thank you so much for joining us and giving us an update. And we really appreciate what you're doing there. And of course, we appreciate the school system and please let your staff know that we're behind them in anything they need to do.
Thank you very much, much appreciated.
You're welcome, you're welcome. All right, let's move on. You know, I know council that I passed up the public comment kind of thing. Because I'm hoping that what we can do is move into the governor's executive order if he would like to. I thought it might be helpful if we just kind of went through it to see how it impacts us here in Oak Ridge and just had an open discussion about it. And then at that point, I thought I am, I'm willing to attempt to try to take questions from the, from the audience. We'll see how that goes. I will remind those that are listening that this is still a business meeting and public comment will be limited to those times when we ask for it. So I just, just set the ground rules a little bit here. So council, is this something you would like to do to go through this? Or are you comfortable with having read through it yourselves and understand how, what it's doing here in Oak Ridge and what are the impacts are here?
Actually, there is something, I feel really comfortable with it. I've read it several times in the last couple of days since it's come out, the new one. However, I noticed today online that there's a lot of controversy over the parks piece in there. And I remember it specifically said, you know, obviously to try and stay at home, but that if you do go out, as long as there's an ability to maintain your six feet of space, that that's okay.
In trails and.
Trails and, and outdoor areas. Now, the controversy locally is the golf course.
Uh, over at Osprey?
No, well, that too, I just thought of that. But, um, no, the actual physical golf course up.
Oh, the golf, golf course.
Yeah, the real, real golf, golf course. Apparently, they've posted that they're still open and people are welcome to come and play golf. But they are not, the pro shop is closed for the six-foot rule. So people are just upset because they think that it shouldn't be open. But everything I read and reread says that it can be. So I wanted to, I wanted to, as a matter of fact.
Just bring that up so we can talk about it a little bit?
Yeah.
I agree with you. This is a, a private business, it's not a park. And it is a recreational facility. However, that recreational facility, as long as they can maintain that six-foot separation and are monitoring it, is absolutely okay if, if they do it. I would, you know, I appreciated their post. It sounded like they had all the bases covered. In a case like this, I believe everyone uses their own golf clubs.
Right.
You're not using other people's golf clubs. So that really isn't an issue. And I agree with you, Dolan, I think it's a good, I think it's a good recreational opportunity. Hold on, I see Brian's getting smart here and putting up the executive order here about outdoor.
Right, if you scroll down a little, I'll show you when to stop. Right here.
Which, where are you now?
I believe, I believe it would be the A letter right there.
Okay.
It says.
To where I am.
I'm looking at, at Brian's, the screen Brian put up, letter A says, "Non-essential social and recreational gatherings of individuals outside of a home or place of residence are prohibited immediately regardless of size if a distance of at least six feet between individuals cannot be maintained." So what that means is if it can be maintained, it's okay.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's how I interpret that too, and it's, I think it's a pretty, pretty clear statement.
And why as well, Delta?
Yeah, I agree, I agree. And so, thank you for bringing that up. Is there anything else specifically that you wanted to bring up before we just kind of whizz through this?
Well, I wanted to bring up parks in general as well.
Okay.
You know, but like, let's say Green Waters Park, if a person wants to go for a walk over there, they're more than welcome to.
Absolutely.
To try and maintain distance if they pass anyone.
Right.
And I believe the same would be true at the disc golf course.
Uh, yes, the disc golf is, is open for use. We're not gonna take those baskets out at, at Osprey. And we'll, people are expected to maintain social distancing and not do a group. The playground structures will be, will be taped off. We're asking people not to use the playground structures because the possibility of spread of transmission is greater on there. And we really can't sanitize them as much as they would need to be sanitized to be used, I would think. But other than that, the bathrooms at all the parks will be closed except for the bathroom at the, at the rest area. That we're keeping open so that we can, so that we can accommodate the travelers that come through. And I think, Brian, I think you mentioned, Brian, that they're going to increase the, the cleaning and sanitation of those bathrooms during, during this time? Is that true?
Yes, they are. We might bring on one more part-timer to help double the effort on the cleaning of those places.
Okay, great, great. So that's, that's that part of it. I was, as I went through this, there was a few things that I, I wanted to make sure that we pointed out. So that, you know, I, we have so few businesses here that this shouldn't be a, a difficult thing. But I do plan on, on touching bases with each and every one of them to see how they're doing and whether or not they're, they're able to comply. You know, starting with our retail shops and moving through to the stores and that type of thing. I, I don't think this is gonna be a difficult thing. I think the important thing in this is that we reassure the community that while, yes, this is a gauzy misdemeanor, if indeed you do get, do get a fine, that that is not the intent of our policing to give a fine. The intent is to educate and to encourage people not to congregate in groups of more than, well, two or three and to maintain, you know, a six-foot distance as appropriate. And I think that, that kind of falls on our shoulders too, in the community, to be able to use the words and express the proper language that, that kindly and gently says, hey, don't remember, don't forget, you've gotta have six feet space between each other. And just reinforce that in what we see also. And, and especially, I, I don't want the community to feel like, oh my gosh, the police are gonna be out watching us and making sure that we're not, you know, handshaking or hip bumping or whatever. I think it's important to get that message out there.
So before we go any further, I had a question about the Walmart Activity Center.
Yes.
I know that it's open for the food pantry. And so I'm kind of, I'm wondering if we are closing off a lot of the bathrooms? I feel like that would be a really good idea, so there, there's a lot less to clean and keep sanitary. And I believe Bingo has been asked not to come until this is lifted, right? Am I right about that?
I think Brian can speak to that. Didn't you say you closed down the senior center?
Yes ma'am, the senior center is closed for their normal activities. I did allow a small group to go in there that's doing some canning of foods for people that need it. They, they agreed to go below 10. I have closed most of the, most of the bathrooms within the WAC. And so there's only a, a couple left to use in case someone's here in, in a small group.
Okay. In the food pantry, are they still up and running out of there or are they over at the, at the, the whatever church?
By knowledge, they're still operating from here.
Okay, good, okay, great. So, uh, other things that I was looking at in here, I think it's pretty straightforward. I hope all of you counselors have had a chance to read it. And, and if you have any questions about it, please do so. Please, you know, send them forward or just ask one another and see if we can't come to some solutions. I haven't heard any, any problems yet, but this is all brand new, beginning today. So I know Dollar Jenner was meeting with their general manager, their district manager this afternoon to get some guidelines as to how to, how to accommodate people coming in and out and keeping down to the limit that they should be and enforcing the six-foot rule. That's something that we'll need to watch, I think, as far as that and the store. Hopefully, we will, you know, we won't have any issues, but I think we can all encourage one another and, and that we should be just fine. Is there anything else in this that anyone had some concerns about or didn't seem? Oh, Brian, would you update the council and let us, let them know what you're gonna do as far as the front office at city, at city hall?
Okay, so we have put signs on the door, essential business only. It has slowed down the traffic a bit and we've encouraged everyone to, mostly it's permits and water bills is what we see mostly in, in city hall. So we've encouraged everyone to kind of go online or call on the telephone for the water piece. Permits, kind of hard to get around that, so we have dealt with those a couple of times. As far as the staffing there, it's really difficult to, to go down, to telecommute with either Leah or Jackie. So for now, we're gonna maintain our, our distance and keep business as usual. I'm working with the municipal judge pro temp to see if we either have to cancel or virtualize the municipal court that's coming next week and, and in the future. So that's to be decided once I, I connect with him. Other than that, most of the, virtually every other employee is essential person. I really can't afford to, to let them telecommute.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. So, and as far as myself, I'm not going into city hall, only on occasion, and I'm trying to do it in off-hours, so I'm not there at all, since I'm in that high-risk category because, you know, of course, because I'm old. So there you go. But I think he's doing, doing a great job at city hall and I know, I know the front staff is really working hard at, at keeping things safe for them, so. I don't have any other things that I saw off of, off of either Facebook or questions that came to me or that popped up to me from the governor's executive order. So if no one has anything else about it and they're all comfortable with it, then we'll just proceed. I am, I did, I did want to let everybody know that I wrote a, a, an article, an op-ed piece for the Dead Mountain Echo. And I think during this time, it would be nice if there was a piece in every Dead Mountain Echo from either myself or from one of the counselors, just speaking towards, you know, keeping a, a common sense, calm approach and, and just addressing anything. So I encourage all of you to put your thoughts in writing if you'd like to and, and submit them to the Dead Mountain Echo. I think it's important for our community, hear our voices in lots of different ways. So, that's, having said that, let me go to some other business from city council. So Bobby, you wanted to give a report on senior and disability services that you're involved with right now?
Yeah, um, so I know, I'm pretty sure everybody's aware that I'm the area coordinator for senior and disability services here in Oak Ridge, and I cover Oak Ridge clear through Pleasantville. And a lot of what I do are home visits in people's homes and assessments and some informed decision-making processes and that sort of thing. So when we had our snowstorm, I participated in that and helped facilitate a lot of the well checks by being able to get a client list. And I learned a lot from that, I think we all learned a lot from that. So trying to think forward and think ahead of what we can do to problem solve before something becomes a great big issue. Which for people in our community, I've started reaching out to my boss and got a, an approval that basically, basically said, go forth and do great things. Um, so he's allowed me to start working on a client list. And so I am going through all of my clients and all the clients that are case managed and contacting them and seeing if they have enough food, if they have a way to the store, if they have natural supports, if they don't, who their emergency contact is, um, if they're able to get their medications and just identifying some different people, um, that might need help. And so I've, I've started that process as an employee, but I've also reached out to, um, the clinics and I just had a good conversation. Um, with Orchid today about what they're doing and we were pretty much on the same wavelength. I know they're already doing some well checks. So that's one piece that I've started. Um, I think it's important to know, one of the things I do, um, are home visits that have to do with our senior, senior meal program. So when a lot of people think of meals on wheels or the senior meal program, they just think of delivering meals to people. But our meal site, along with all the others, is kind of two pronged. You have on your meals on wheels, which is frozen meals that are delivered to people that are basically homebound because they just can't get out for whatever health reason. And then you have our congregate meals that are held at the meal site where people can go there and eat lunches twice a week. Um, what our meal site is currently doing is on Tuesday, they're delivering meals to all the, um, the most almost clients and there's volunteers that do that. So that's pretty much all run by volunteers. And that doesn't go to just anybody who can't call and say, oh, I want meals and have them delivered. It's not that simple. Um, because they have a lot of set criteria they have to deal with. And then on Thursdays, they're allowing people that would normally go to the congregate meals to come in and kind of get a, um, kind of a grab as you go type of meal. And some of those are the frozen meals that they're giving them. So they're allowing that and they're being very cautious, very careful, wearing masks, wearing gloves. Um, but they are in need of hand sanitizer and Clorox wipes. Cause a lot of the volunteers are seniors themselves. So, um, they do have that need and they are still serving some of our most vulnerable people that would not otherwise have meals, which is fantastic, I think. Um, and as for senior and disability services, the doors are still open in Eugene, but just from eleven to two, I believe. And my lobby is closed here in Oak Ridge. Um, and I'm able to telecommute part of the time, or I could do full time, but it's a lot easier to work from here with kids at home. Um, so that is something that I'm doing. And then I also reached out to my boss about, um, our proposed resolution for tonight that has to do with, um, declaring an emergency. And I confirmed that once we get a resolution and it's signed, I don't have to have signed authorizations from my clients. I can just get a verbal permission from them to be able to, um, somebody, send somebody out to help them. So as I go through, um, the clients I'm contacting and I talk to them, as I'm talking to them and asking them, is it okay if I send somebody out to help you? And, um, and once we have that resolution, I can start that process.
Good.
So, um, it'll, it'll make it a lot easier to be able to help people. And so I'm encouraging anybody, um, that knows somebody to self identify and call me if you're not on my list because there's some people that may not access our services. And have never accessed them that really is in a pickle in a bind right now. Thinking, so, um, hopefully people will reach out and do that. Um, I don't know if we, uh, if, well, I can give you my phone number out now.
Yes, please.
Okay, it's five four one, six eight two, seven eight zero two.
Thank you.
So, you're welcome. So definitely send people my way because I've already talked to the police department too and they're aware of what I'm doing. Um, I've talked to Brian a little bit, so he's aware of what I'm doing. And, um, I talked to Rick the other day and I know that he went out to all of the different trailer parks and the apartment complexes and talked to the property managers about checking in with all of their residents and making sure that people are being safe and um, definitely cha- checking in with their vulnerable residents to make sure they're being, um, cared for and have what they need. So we don't end up having somebody that experiences something really horrible because of this. And interestingly enough, I got an email from Mountain View Manor that said, hey, this is what we posted on our door. This is what I'm doing. And it was great to get that follow-up and, and see that they listened and they're following through and they're definitely checking with their clients and they're trying to, um, do everything that's been asked of them and still take care of the residents. So.
Awesome. Thank you, Bobby.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Um, I also, I talked to, is it John? Is that your director's name? Um.
David?
David, yes, I talked to David today too. Yeah, yeah, he's a great guy and he had wonderful things to say about you. And, and he actually said to me, if there's a war, I want Bobby on my side. So I'll pass along that up to you. Um, but I did ask him about volunteers because I've had people in the community approach me about, well, what can I do to help? And, um, you and I, Bobby, had talked about, well, you know, sometimes that's a sticky wicket because you have to have a background check and you have to have this and that. But he was actually working through some of that and identifying positions and things that could be done that, um, people perhaps don't need to have that, um, for the background check. I also asked him about a couple of people who talked to me who have had background checks and have all that available because of where they work. Um, currently, and he said, oh, definitely that we could just send them directly to you or to him and, and that that would be hopefully a, a much faster process. Um, since we don't know what we're going to need or anticipate in, anticipate needing in the next three weeks, maybe we will need extra hands, um, to help with the meals and meals on program. So thank you for what you're doing, Bobby. I sure appreciate it.
Yeah. And I would have mentioned, I would have mentioned that, but I didn't have exact information. So I didn't want to.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, I, I'll go ahead and stick my foot in my mouth then for you.
No, it's, it's okay. I just, you know, I don't, well, you know.
Yeah, no, no, I totally, I totally understand. I agree with that.
I don't want to step on my employer's toes.
Yes. It's always a wise decision.
Yes.
Um, okay, um, Dawn, you had a couple of questions that you wanted to bring up during the City Council business?
Yes, and if you don't mind, um, I'll ask them. I think most of them are going to be for Brian to answer. So can I just ask them one at a time and wait for the answer and then move on?
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, the first one is when will copies of the budget be available at City Hall to pick up for the counselors and the budget members?
It'll be the night before the budget committee hearing, so March thirtieth.
Um, hearing or meeting?
My mistake, the first meeting on the March thirty first.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And then, um, the CIS risk assessment, when will we be getting a copy of that report?
I had intended to give them out, but if, uh, let me, let me take a close look at them to see if there's anything in there that I really shouldn't be forwarded out, but, uh, and then, then I'll, I'll give it to the council.
Um, Realtor of record, do we have any applications yet or do we need to repost that?
The current application cycle is, has not expired yet.
Oh.
It's early April. Uh, to my knowledge, uh, I haven't seen any formal applications, even though I've fielded most of four calls of interested Realtors.
Oh, good. Um, the union bargaining, is that still going on?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Uh, three unions and, uh, I've met with, uh, all of them at least once. And, uh, I think, let's see, we had a, well, it was a virtual meeting with, uh, with the general unit. So, uh, it's, it's going, uh, you know, this, the, the whole pandemic has kind of put a little bit of a break on it. But, uh, we'll get there before they expire at the end of June.
Okay, um, this next one, I wondered if we already have a rezoning in place for that, that new disc golf course that's going in?
It'll be combined with, uh, the parks plan. And, uh, in addition, we are looking at, uh, kind of doing a whole swath down Cockany of rezoning. So we're going to try to roll all this in to save effort.
Okay, so, um, the reason I bring that up is because just yesterday I was walking my dog and I walk in the upper part of the, uh, the OIP. And the dog got off the normal area where we go to and down a trail that's apparently been put in that's super steep and I had to try and get down there to, to catch him before he got off too far. And the trail was, um, it was really hard to get down because of its steepness. So I'm wondering if we, I didn't know trails existed in there.
Yeah.
Are those?
Is that behind the, by the water tower, uh, down to the lower portion, that section right there?
Yeah, well, do you know where the fire was a couple of years ago along that hill?
Yeah, yeah, down in there.
Right in that area, um,
Yeah.
by an old railroad spur at the very top.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I'm talking about?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I do know where you're talking about.
From right there down to the bottom where the fire was.
Mm-hmm.
There's a steep trail.
Is it a newly carved one, you think?
It looks like it. And that's why I wondered if we had the zoning, if someone's working on building already or what's, what's happening?
Just, just golf club, I believe, and Brian, you can probably fill this in is, is, has already begun working on some of the trails and the clearing that they can do without doing any hard scape. It's just soft scape. Well, I don't know if that's considered hard or soft scape, but it doesn't have anything to do with, uh, uh, pieces of equipment as far as that are going to be put into the ground, the baskets. But, um, they have been working on the, on the trails, clearing out blackberries and that type of thing. So I don't know what their intention is, whether that'll have steps on it or what, but, um, that may be of what you've run into.
Okay, so my concern there is that right now it seems like an unsafe trail. So it maybe either needs to be posted that it's not a usable trail yet. Or, um, or have somebody look at, uh, you know, building it to spec so that it is a safe trail?
Okay, that's a good point. Um, Brian, can you talk to Jason about that and work, work with him?
I, I will tell you that I've given, uh, Jason and goats and whoever, whatever volunteers that he's gathered to clear. I didn't really authorize him to make any trails, so I'm not sure that's, the trail's been made by one of them. Uh, as far as I know, they've been clearing blackberries and that's about it. Uh, they have taken a back on there to clear some. Uh, and they cannot do anything, uh, as far as pouring cement, putting it in baskets or anything until it's been rezoned and they know that.
Oh, yeah.
I will inquire of Rick and, uh, Jason to let me know if it happened cutting trails and if so, um, make sure that they're, uh, either fenced off or, uh, not accessible to the public.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Thank you, Dawn. Did you have any other?
I do have two things I would just like to mention to add to future agendas because they're going to take a little uh, research somehow. One is I've been reading through some old minutes and, um, these two items have been brought up several times by public comment in our, in different meetings. One is the idea of storing our excess police cars on each end of town.
Oh, yeah.
So that they might encourage people to slow down. Um, I'd like, I'd like for us to be able to talk about whether that's a possibility. And then the second thing is, um, something that, um, Ken Hooker, he probably has mentioned it a dozen times in the last dozen years or so that he would really like to see the truck traffic halted on Hill Street. I caught it in some different minutes at different times when he's brought it up that there are ordinances that can be written that, um, we just need to do it in order to make it happen. So I'd like us to look into that. Or at least talk about it and as a council.
Sure, let's talk about it. Cause I know there's signs up there already, but it probably is a, a bigger discussion about, you know, what can we do to maybe do some saturation and, and, um, maybe talk to some of the offender, offending, um, trucking companies, U P, that type of thing.
Or talk to the police chief because he did mention in one of the meetings that, um, all we need is for our ordinance to match what the sign says and then they can enforce it.
Oh, okay. Let's, let's add those. So let's try to get, um, both of those on to an agenda in sometime in April. I, I don't, I can't recall what the list looks like right now for April. Um, but let's try to do that, um, in April and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Awesome. Anything else, Dawn?
No, that's everything.
Okay. And was there any other business from the city council that, um, counselors you would like to bring up right now? I'm assuming silence is no. Okay, um, let's move on then to, uh, business from the city administrator, ten point one. Brian, do you have an update that you wanted to share?
Now, my days have kind of been, uh, uncomfortable about, uh, recently, so I'll, I'll save that, but I, I, I will move on to the added item. That's okay?
Excellent. Go ahead.
Okay, this is, uh, ten point, point.
Before we jump into it.
Yes.
I'm going to declare a potential conflict of interest. Uh, so South Limit Solutions may be bidding on this work and uh, I've been contracted by South Limit Solutions in the past to do work. And so that would be my business, Trish Maxwell LLC. Um, and with that being said, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Thank you, Tricia, for the abstention. Please make a note in the minutes that Trisha Maxwell has abstained.
Max Field.
Max, thank you. It's Max Field has abstained. Okay, Brian, go ahead.
Okay, uh, this is the approval of a community response plan grant agreement. Uh, and we're looking for a motion from the floor and a vote. Uh, you've read through the issue. Uh, what we're trying to do is, uh, provide a fire smoke mitigation community response plan. Many of the communities that are, uh, in high risk have started or are well along with developing these. Um, we managed to garner a twenty-five thousand dollar grant initially for to develop the plan. And since then, we've gotten another ten to, uh, kind of an add-on project. Um, so we're looking to, this is, is a basically a final draft. There will be no further changes from DEQ on this of any major changes. Um, and, uh, we've been through it with, uh, our partners, which, uh, um, we're working with and, and so we're, what you see is kind of what it's going to be. So what I'm doing is, uh, they're looking for have an approval by the first of April so we can get started. So I'd like to get a approval for the mayor to be able to sign this when it goes final.
Excellent. Um, can I have a motion?
I would make a motion, but I don't have that in my written packet and I'm afraid to touch my iPad. I'm afraid it was connecting from the meeting.
Uh, go ahead. Does a, a counselor have the, the motion in front of them that Brian provided? No? Okay, so, um, I move that, uh, I, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the DEQ fire smoke grant agreement. Um, period.
I'll second that.
Thank you, counselor. Um, Brian, will you call for a vote?
Oh, Kathy, I do have some discussion.
I'm sorry, I forgot discussion. Please, discussion. Go for it, guys.
Okay, my question is, who is going to be overseeing or managing this grant?
City of Oak Ridge.
Like specifically who in the city of Oak Ridge manages it?
Yeah, probably a combination of Rick Zilstra and myself.
Okay.
Right now it's been me.
Okay, um, I, I'm sorry. I had just noticed that there are a lot of, um, uh, reports that they're asking for and attending smoke management meetings and training and conferences and interviews. And so, um, I wanted to just know like who's managing, making sure all of that is happening on time. Because it does specifically say in this grant that it can be, it can be killed at any minute if they find out we're not doing everything to a T.
Okay, so we have two partners in this, two major partners. Uh, and that would be South Willamette Solutions and The Good Company. They're going to be doing most of the heavy lifting on this project. And I will be in a kind of an oversight role to make sure that we, uh, we meet all the deadlines along with Rick. So that, that's kind of the, the labor plan for this entire thing.
Okay. So will there be a project tracking sheet developed for this so that we can see how it's, um, going?
So will there be a project tracking sheet developed for this, so that we can see how it's, um, going?
Yes, uh, actually, there's some really significant analysis going on, and I'm, I'm thinking that, uh, U of O is involved on a, on a, I believe, on a, is planning to be involved on a, on a, sort of a minor role in the, the extra ten thousand that we got. And, uh, Good Company will, uh, be kind of the timeline manager and, and provide me with that information.
Perfect. Right, and I would just, um, so the, the end result of this, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, um, so in getting, in getting the, the larger woodsmoke, um, uh, grant that we got, you know, it's gonna produce a lot of, 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 uh, good stuff from that, but, um, sometimes the things that fall through the cracks is being able to track the data that comes from this, because that data becomes really important, not only for our implementation, but for, for, um, our, um, for, for proving to to D E Q that we've accomplished what we need to accomplish, as well as pushing our, our, um, our model of what we're doing to others, and so by getting this extra money, um, it really allows them to do a lot of good data, um, compilation and tracking, and then reporting out on it. So it's really a, a win-win, it just enhances our ability, um, to, um, to be a shining star, as well as pave the way for other, other communities or other, um, areas that want to do something like this to see the results. And it will really help us in the future when we'll be able to go back and say, this is what we accomplished, so it's kind of an, an important piece to it, and it was really nice to have this money, um, uh, uh, applied for and, and then received, so.
I do just wanna add a little bit more to this, too, um.
Uh, may I point out, uh, if Trish is abstaining from the vote, I don't believe she's allowed to participate in the conversation. Is that right?
She claimed a potential conflict of interest, right?
Oh, she did? My apologies.
No.
I could still technically vote as well, but I just don't, I don't even wanna, I don't wanna touch it. The intent with the community response plan is actually to, um, do more prescribed burning, and that will help, uh, increase our public safety, um, in that we're reducing, uh, danger within the wildland urban interface. Uh, so really, the, the whole intent behind it is to, um, protect vulnerable populations when we do try to do more prescribed burning. Um, now, with that being said, we did get an extra ten thousand dollars, well, the city got an extra ten thousand dollars, in order to do a data analysis, which ties in really closely to the air quality work that Good Company's been doing. That's all I got.
Thank you, Tricia, I appreciate you flushing that out a little bit, that's awesome. Excellent, councillors, any other discussion? Brian, will you call for a vote?
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Councillor Whitney?
Aye.
Councillor Kenyon?
Aye.
Uh, Councillor Maxfield abstained? Councillor Forcombe?
Aye.
Councillor McLellan?
Aye.
Councillor Holland?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, council, I appreciate that. Um, Brian, do we have reports, um, to be given, is something I'm going through or not?
Yes, we do.
The finance director, then?
Well, let me get the camera on him.
Good.
Hear me? Can you, can you hear Bill?
I don't hear anything from Bill yet.
You just, you, you should be able to hear if you speak up.
Uh, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
I won't, long, I don't have too much to say, uh, just a quick update on the financials. Uh, review of, as of February, um, few line items that are over budget, but nothing that, uh, can handle, overall, the funds are looking pretty good in terms of staying within budget. Uh, the ambulance revenues bumped up a little bit more, a little bit in, in the February, uh, a little higher than they, they were, so that was a good trend, we'll see if that continues, we're still trending behind on the ambulance revenues, um. Uh, obviously, the current circumstances are gonna have an impact on this with regard to, excuse me, I'm sorry, things that are affected by, uh, you know, things like our transient, uh, room taxes and our, uh, uh, fuel, fuel and gas taxes, and those things are gonna be adversely affected by this, uh, uh, virus that we have, and the subsequent drop in activity. I'm estimating it probably thirty-five to forty thousand dollar a month impact, uh, as long as this thing goes on. Probably on those revenues that are, uh, related to recreation and tourism and travel and those kinds of things, mo- hotel stays and those kinds of things, excuse me, sorry. Um, so that, it will, it will have an impact. Um, we are tracking, uh, we are certainly, uh, tracking all expenses that are related to this, uh, to, to this crisis, uh, in terms of, uh, making sure we have, uh, adequate documentation for reimbursement from, uh, federal, state, whatever authorities might, might be providing some sort of reimbursements for expenses that occurred on that, so you do have these kinds of expenses, please document them well, uh, what relation they had to the, uh, uh, to this crisis and, and so that we have that, uh, have that on hand when we seek re- any reimbursement for the expenses we've been, uh, the city's incurred, so. Uh, other than that, we're just working hard on getting the, uh, budget ready for, uh, the budget committee meeting next, uh, next Tuesday night. That's it, any, any questions for?
Yes, Bill, I noticed I don't have, um, copies yet of the current financial reports that you normally send out, are those coming?
You have them, I actually sent them out like two or three weeks ago.
You did, you did, I received them.
Really?
Uh, I, unless I missed, unless I missed you on the email, uh, which always a possibility, of course. But, yeah, I sent them out, the February ones out, uh, I think in the first week of February sometime, or January. Yeah, I'm sorry, the January ones.
Oh, he doesn't, okay, I'll search.
It typically says no subject, so I guess for Bill, just to know if you write in.
So it was March tenth, um, Dawn, you might look at March tenth, and it comes from William Jones with no subject.
Okay, and I also searched for Bill, so.
I'm confused, did, did you get them, Dawn?
Um, I don't know, I'll look for him again.
Okay, well, just let me know, if, if you didn't, I'll certainly send you another copy right away.
Okay.
So, Bill, I did have a question for you, you said you thought there'd be about a thirty-five to forty K monthly impact? Because during this time of our little crisis going on here, did you mean direct impact or direct and indirect as far as, um, uh, tourism dollars that may be coming into the city?
I would expect, uh, direct, fairly direct impact, because I, I believe, you know, with the, the less, with less travel, uh, there'd be the gas, the gas taxes and so on, the fuel and gas tax will no doubt decrease, uh, transit room tax will, uh, decrease, so I think, uh, revenues that we get, uh, as part of those uh, allocations from the, from the state and from other areas that will, uh, sure will drop.
Well, perhaps the, the revenue we get from, from the marijuana sales, which has remained open, will increase, I mean, who knows? We might, we might see an in, an uptick. That's a joke, guys.
That's a, that's a rough estimate, and I, I'm hoping I'm being too pessimistic, of course.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you being pessimistic, I think that's a, a good attribute to have.
Uh, Bill, real quickly, are you gonna stay in the meeting for a little while?
I'm sorry, say that again? I didn't catch.
I'm going to have a question for you later, will you still be here?
Yes.
Okay.
I will be.
Okay.
Any other questions for?
Okay, I'm gonna shift the camera to the police chief, hang on, we just.
Well, that's nice. Had you for a minute.
Try again.
Test, one, two, three, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I don't have a normal report, I kind of have a little bit of synopsis on a directive we'll be putting out if you guys pass the emergency legislation this evening. Uh, for us, since we're all essential employees, it's kind of been business as usual for us. As far as the law enforcement side's concerned, we've been taking our precautions the best we can with the equipment we have, we're really short on personal protective equipment, uh, we have orders, but everybody has orders, so. We've still been taking people to jail, we've still been taking people to the, to the mental hospital in Eugene, uh, that's probably been our biggest uptick, is mental health crisis and taking people down to the job. Uh, if the legislation's passed tonight, I have a directive that's gonna go out to my staff tomorrow on kind of a few changes in procedures, uh, to match kind of our partners statewide regarding fire emergencies. Uh, one good thing that's happened for us, the Oregon State Police Superintendent convinced the powers that be to, uh, give us first access to, uh, testing for the virus, so we keep a emergency service personnel on the road, because a lot of departments have people when they're quarantined that don't have it, or if they don't think it has it, it's a cross they're taking, so every Sunday, able to put in for a testing if we need to test them, but, uh, also, uh, starting tomorrow, officers will all be taking, getting their temperatures taken, uh, the closest they can to begin their shift by the fire department, just to kind of keep an eye on our public safety people, that'll be our police officers, and I believe the fires can do that as well. Uh, again, we've, uh, kind of been matching our partners as far as, uh, if it's a non-mandatory arrest or it's not a felony, we've been trying to cite people, or either through district court or through our municipal court, through our eight seventy-three ordinance, and move incarceration to, to keep the court system kind of where it's at, and to keep the jail where it's at, uh, because a lot of the, the court system is, is kind of slowed down a little bit. Uh, D M B's given us some direction on s- on stuff, because they're gonna be closing down a lot of, a lot of things, so a lot of things, like if your license expires, if your registration expires, a lot of things like that will be kind of put on hold for, we'll be citing people for that. If it happens during this time period, if you, I mean, if you had a license expired from a year ago, that's still gonna take enforcement action, but a lot of the things with D M B and traffic during this period won't be enforced at request of D M B. Uh, and I, and we'll have a directive for my people after this meeting, if you guys pass the word to ordinance, and I can send that out to the council tomorrow. Our office staff, we're gonna, they're gonna limit them to probably starting tomorrow is, they're gonna not work together, so one of them will be on, one of them will be off, type of thing, uh. Patrol staff, for the month of April, we will be going to twenty-four hour coverage. No on-call, it'll be, there'll be boots on the ground twenty-four hours a day unless something happens, uh, with somebody as far as their health is concerned, so that way, the citizens can be reassured, there's, there's somebody around unless they're, take a, have a Eugene or something else happens. And we'll, we'll hold that staffing until, uh, the academy starts back up. Officer Miller, who was in the academy, is back right now, because the academy is canceled till at least May fourteenth. And then if people have any questions, and then I can answer one of Dawn's questions as well.
Any questions for, uh?
Yes, you're right, I forgot to hit the unmute, I'm sorry. Um, Chief, can you just, um, reassure, um, council as well as any public that, about the, um, the precautions that you're taking as far as cleaning your cars and that type of thing, has that been increased also?
Yeah, we're trying to disinfect as, as, as city crews helping us with some of that, plus the officers are getting a directive to after any person's been in their car, or they need to disinfect, anybody's been in the, the, are holding cells, it's gotta be disinfected right away, so it's, it's fresh for the next. And then personally making sure, uh, people are washing their hands and, you know, using the wipes and that kind of stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but we're down to twelve, uh, and ninety-five masks, I mean, everybody's in that, that, bought right now, so.
Okay, well, we sure appreciate you guys, um, having boots on the ground twenty-four, seven in April, um, I think that'll be something that the public really will like to hear also, and, um, and I know that you guys are putting yourself out there and at risk, so stay safe. You know, and we want you to do everything you can do to protect yourself as well.
Yeah, uh, one thing we have got, I have got a personally as chief, a lot of questions on the, the governor's executive order, basically our guy, Department of Justice, you know, our council, the Chiefs of Police Association, Law, Oregon Sheriff's Association, and Oregon State Police, this is really an education thing. And then also to educate people that are complainants, just because two people are walking and holding hands does not give us the right to go contact them per se. Household members don't have to follow that rule, and then we won't be out just stopping cars to have California kids around traveling, because we still have that probable cause for something else, like a violation or a crime, so that's been a lot of questions I've got on that, and our single biggest question I've got was like thirty or so people have contacted me, uh, for recreation, since the order amounts, and, uh, some of that is unclear, so we've directed tho- I've directed those questions to whatever actual land management agency is in charge of the dirt they're gonna go be recreating on.
Okay.
Part that people are asking questions on is more to do with travel, a lot of the chiefs have also asked kind of some direction from the state and what they're saying about that, because people are confused about the travel, where there's your essential things, but the car dealership is still open, so can I go to the car dealership and buy new car? We read questions like that, or some of those we're pushing up the chain to, to get some clarification on. Not, not so much for enforcement, but, but to be able to future educate people and to also be able to answer those questions when they're asked.
Excellent, excellent, no, I appreciate that you're doing that, and I just want to encourage you, um, I know that you get lots of questions from lots of different people, and if you ever have questions that, that you feel, um, seem to be repetitive and council can do anything to push out, um, correct answers, please let us know, um, so that we'll be aware of those too, and we can, we can mimic what it is that you're saying to our community and reassure them in that way, so thank you so much.
One thing I'll try to do is I will send you guys all a link to the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife frequently ask questions for this times, because that's, that's answered a lot of the questions I've been having. That's answered that, our recreation question.
Good, thank you.
Maybe that could go up on our city website in the co- co- uh, COVID nineteen section? If it applies.
Great suggestion.
Councillor Kenyon, you had a, about the ordinance for the trucks?
Yes, on, uh, well, I asked for it to be a topic of discussion at a future meeting.
Yeah, the, the, uh, or, an, an ordinance that we could enforce from the signs, because we have a couple of signs in town, there's one up kind of going up High Prairie, that says no log trucks, and then there's one on Hill Street that says no trucks, and of course, I believe we have one at the, uh, rest area, and I believe currently the one that's, uh, enforceable is the rest area one. And then a lot of people have made complaints about Union Pacific, but as far as I remember, I will clarify, but you, but the, oh, God, told us we could not even by ordinance, uh, stop Union Pacific from driving on any of our streets to go, because it's, there's a law that says they can go to their shop. So it's, I can't remember the exact legal term, but there's something to do with, they would still be able to go to their place of work.
So that sounds like something that perhaps we can, um, because I know a lot of that traffic is U P, and you know, it sounds like what we need to do is reach out to U P, or I could do that and, and try to open up that line of communication and just make it a, a friendly request. Um, and do it that way, I mean, I could certainly do that, as well as, you know, doing what you need to do to write a, uh, a larger ordinance, ordinance, so let's keep that in mind when we have that discussion.
I'm with Rick Zilstra, and I believe the original plan from the, the traffic safety stuff, that there was a proposed truck group in Oak Ridge, and it was like a one-in-one-out type of thing.
Yeah, I thought the T S P has that in it, so I think, uh, we can talk about that when we get to the, when we get to it.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Okay. Any other questions for the police chief? Okay. I'll ask Eric to come online and give a fire department brief. And Scott as well, if he has any, anything to add after Eric.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
So this morning I participated in the medical control board meeting. And through that meeting, the medical control board would like the fire department to begin evaluating our own staff that's working. I sent out a memo earlier. Scott reviewed it and Brian reviewed it. I believe Brian's already posted it on our training webpage. But basically, we're going to be evaluating, checking temperatures and evaluating people that are working at the fire station at eight in the morning and then eight in the evening, twice a day, and documenting those. I also went through our charting software and was able to add a simple yes/no checkbox that says we have encountered a potential COVID-19 patient, which is somebody with a temperature over 100.4 and, and shortness of breath. That'll make it easier for us to be able to pull that data back and see how many times have we gone to that type of incident. Other than that, Scott, do you have anything else to add?
I would just say that we did close the fire station to the public on March 13th. And that's just to limit the potential of an accidental exposure. We have had a long history of walk-in patients come to the fire department. So we did set up a triage tent out front so we can direct the people as they walk into the department to go out to that triage area. And we can assess them out there just to help protect our, our personnel. They do have PPE there so that they can dawn it if they need to. We're also limiting the number of personnel, ambulance personnel at the station, only allowing the essential on-duty crews there. We've also implemented a personal protective equipment matrix so to guide our personnel on what they should be wearing for a particular situation. We're using every resource that we have available to get information out to our crews. You know, we have 28 personnel. And it's, it's difficult to get all the information out there, but we are using our online training system, email, webinars. And we do have a closed Facebook group that we're getting information out to everybody. We've been talking with the clinics to make sure that we're using those resources appropriately. We've also provided some N95 masks to postal pharmacy. We are in good supply of some PPE, but short in others. I did make an order to the Lane County Emergency Operations Center yesterday, and we were able to get some supplies for them, but not everything that we needed. And we should be able to share some things with our police department. It doesn't look like we can count on the EOC to get PPE in the future, but we are looking at other EMS supply vendors and other resources that we may be able to get additional.
One other thing I was going to mention was the medical control board talked about our dispatching matrix and opening up a dialogue with our dispatch. And educating the public when they, when somebody calls. South Lane's been having a number of people call because they have a runny nose and, and they want to get transported into the hospital to get a COVID test. And if you don't meet the criteria of a temperature of 100.4 and they're not, shortness of breath, you're, they're not going to give you a COVID-19 test. You have to meet the protocol to be able to get that test. And so the medical control board is looking at potential ways of, of allowing us to educate the public and limit our exposure by preventing those calls from even coming to our, our level. And having that settled at dispatch saying, well, find an alternate means, whether it's driving yourself to the hospital, contacting your primary care doctor, or just educating them as to what, what, when they're really going to get a test or not.
Anybody have any questions?
Okay, we'll, we'll move on to Public Works. I'll be briefing that for Rick. He's on vacation. At Public Works, they primarily, when it comes to internal controls with the COVID-19, they primarily work alone. And when they're doing their meter readings, they're going to make a determined effort to keep distance from any citizens. So at least a six-foot distance there. But as we mentioned before, they are pretty much doubled up on the amount of cleanings they do on the public spaces, bathrooms. They've also been using almost a lot of bleach to attempt to, you know, be more effective on the cleaning. When it comes to actual mechanics of it, we've distributed 13 in February, this is, we distributed 13 million gallons of water, treated 25 million gallons. I'm sorry, that, yeah, million. And 33 service orders, zero water leaks, one plugged main on Y drive, no damages, 10 locates. They finished the bike rack and concrete pad, which is in early April, started sweet sweeping and pothole repairs, final repairs for the rest. The caretaker's house have been completed for the rest area. April, the new caretaker has been doing a very good job building maintenance at city shop and OIP office, park mowing and maintenance, fleet vehicle, maintenance and repairs. And site preparations made for the test well at Green Waters Park. So that's kind of it for Public Works. Any questions there?
Actually, it just occurred to me, have we turned off the water, the public water fountains?
I'll get the answer to that question. I don't know.
Okay. I was just curious. Drinking fountains. I, I know we don't have any water fountains, but drinking fountains.
I'll check you.
Thank you.
Okay. For community services, I'm just going to move into 10.6.1, which is a time-critical amendment between ODOT. This is the city request for extension of ODOT-TSP agreement. The proposed act of our council is a motion from the floor and a vote. There was the exhibit, which is the amendment number two for the grant. You're sure you've read through the issue. No fiscal impact. There's no money involved in this. It's merely a time extension. Your options are to let the mayor sign the amendment or do not amend the ODOT contract. Staff recommends number one. And that's the motion.
Counsel, can I have a motion?
Sure. I move, we approve the mayor signing amendment number two to the Oak Ridge Transportation Growth Management Grant in order to complete the Oak Ridge Transportation System Plan.
Thank you, Bobby.
A second.
We got a second from Counselor Forkum.
Any discussion? I do.
Go ahead, Dawn.
In reviewing this amendment, I realized that amendment number one was not approved by council. And I can't find in the minutes where the original IGA was approved by council as well. So I'm concerned about that, and I think it's something that we just need to look into. I know it doesn't have anything to do with this motion today. But another concern of mine is that I've gone over our budget, and for what's in this amendment, none of these numbers are in our budget. We don't have any money planned to, to meet our match, and we don't show anywhere that we've got a grant out there to cover the rest of this that we're agreeing to in this amendment.
So what budget are you talking about? The month, the budget that you see in amendment number one, is that what you're looking at?
Um, yes. It would be, so amendment number one does go over all the budgetary expenses, but by extending this, we're agreeing to everything that we've already agreed to. So I'm, I'm just concerned that financially, this is something we are not prepared for. So what are we going to do?
So I, I think if I'm not mistaken, that this money is already came in as a grant, and that's what allowed this study to happen? This wasn't money that came from us. And is that not correct, Brian?
Yeah, this, there's no money tied to this extension. Whatever money has been paid is all they're getting. So there's further money to be spent.
Okay, so I don't see anywhere that we have paid our match, $24,700 in any previous budgets, nor is it booked for this year's budget? And so I was assuming that once this is done, we're going to get a bill?
No, I believe our match was done in kind service is the work that we did. And we can verify that. I, I think Rick has that information, but it was my understanding that there was no money that we needed to do that our in-kind work was considered our match.
So in-kind work has a dollar amount attached to it, $24,700?
Evidently, evidently. And I have, I have asked repeatedly about that, you know, when I've talked to Franny about, so do we owe anything? And no, she says this is all paid and your, your match was done with in-kind work. But I'm more than happy to, to pursue that, call Franny and, and get it in writing that, you know, there was never any match intended and that we won't receive a bill because I understand what your concern is. I certainly don't want to get a bill for $24,000.
Yeah, I'd like to see that in writing. I'd appreciate that.
Okay, we can do that. Absolutely, we can do that.
And with regard to this agenda bill, I, I think if there is money due, we're getting a bill one way or the other. So I would not hold up this particular agenda item for that.
I agree. I was just concerned.
Well, section A to number C says city amount, the city's amount shall not exceed $0.
Keep going a little further down.
I know. I saw that down there blow as well. So it's kind of contradictory to itself if you.
Oh, on E, please match amount. Okay, I, I will, I will get clarification from Franny on both of those. And just to explain what that meant, because like I said, I'm only repeating what I, I remember being said, but let's get clarification about that matching amount.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You're welcome, Dawn. Any other questions? Okay, can we call for a vote then?
One sec.
Absolutely.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Forkum?
Aye.
Counselor Maxfield?
Aye.
Counselor Hollis?
Aye.
For Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor McClellan?
Aye.
Those should pass.
Thank you, counsel. Let's move on to, where are we at? 13.1, I think we are at.
No.
Oh, sorry. Where am I?
10.
10, sorry.
Items removed from consent agenda?
Oh, it kind of got messed up. We don't have any of those. We don't have any public hearings. So we are at 13.1. Am I not right?
That is correct.
Okay, good. 13.1, okay. Brian, will you introduce this?
Yeah. Okay, this is a resolution declaring a local state of emergency due to the present COVID-19 pandemic. The proposed council action is a motion from the floor to approve the resolution. The exhibit is a proposed resolution 042020. You've read through the issue, I'm sure. The fiscal impact is to be decided. It is likely there will be some federal reimbursement for costs related to COVID-19, and we've seen some, some guidance on that already. Your motion's already adopt this resolution 042020 or do not adopt it. We're recommending that option one, and it truly is a precaution. Currently, I don't see a dying need for, for the resolution, but I think we need to be ready should something happen, and we need to use parts of this. And you have heard from the police chief that said there will be some changes within its arena, as there will everywhere. What I would like to do is let you know that the city attorney is online if you have any questions regarding this resolution. He primarily drafted this and I, I chopped it. So he's well in the know about the resolution. And mayor, would you like me to read the entire resolution, given the significance?
Um, yeah, I, I don't, I thought I would do it if you don't mind.
Sure.
Sure. So follow along, everybody. And for those of you who aren't following along, I'm hoping that the public can hear me just fine. This is a resolution declaring a local state of emergency due to the present COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas ORS 401.309 provides authority for the city of Oak Ridge to declare by resolution that a state of emergency exists within the city. Whereas the city of Oak Ridge has enacted Local Ordinance 693 (Municipal Code, Chapter 37), that provides emergency management response powers. Whereas coronaviruses are a group of viruses that can cause respiratory disease with the potential to cause serious illness or loss of life. Whereas the novel coronavirus causes illness is known as COVID-19. According to the U.S. Center for Disease Control and Prevention, COVID-19 represents a high potential public health risk threat, and therefore the threat constitutes a citywide emergency under ORS 401.025 (1) and Oak Ridge Municipal Code, Chapter 37. Whereas as of March 20th, 2020, there were 88 known cases of coronavirus in Oregon, 14,366 cases in the United States, and 263,071 cases in the world with 11,113 deaths worldwide. Whereas on March 8th, 2020, the governor declared a state of emergency. On March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization declared COVID-19 to be a global pandemic. And on March 13th, the president of the, the president declared a national state of emergency. Whereas on March 17th, 2020, the governor issued Executive Order 2007 prohibiting gatherings of more than 25 people and Executive Order 2008, closing the public schools. Whereas Oak Ridge Municipal Code, Chapter 37, and ORS Chapter 401 authorize certain actions to be taken during a state of emergency when necessary for public safety or for the efficient conduct of activities to minimize or mitigate the effects of the emergency. Whereas the COVID-19 pandemic will create significant health and financial impacts to the community for an unknown duration. Whereas to ensure the city of Oak Ridge is fully prepared for COVID-19 and that local authorities have the resources needed to respond to COVID-19, a declaration of emergency is necessary. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered by the city council of the city of Oak Ridge, a state of emergency is declared for the entire city of Oak Ridge, effective March 24th, 2020, at 8:33 PM for the city of Oak Ridge. Upon this declaration of a state of emergency, the city administrator is empowered to carry out the appropriate functions and duties identified in the Oak Ridge Municipal Code, Chapter 37, and ORS Chapter 401 during the time of emergency. The city lays down the imminent necessary provisions of the emergency operating.
Kathy, you, you started to cut out, I think because you moved back.
Okay. Let me see. How's this? Does that sound better, Dawn?
Yes.
Thank you. Three, the city administrator shall take all necessary steps authorized by law to coordinate response and recovery to this emergency, including but not limited to requesting assistance and potential reimbursement from Lane County, the state of Oregon, and appropriate federal agencies, or taking any actions needed to enforce orders and rules issued by the state of Oregon under ORS Chapter 401 or by the federal government. Four, emergency procurement is authorized under ORS 279B.080. The following five, the following special regulations and emergency measures are imposed that are necessary for public safety or for the efficient conduct of activities to minimize or mitigate the effects of the emergency. A, the city may adjust, waive, or defer.
A, the city may adjust, waive, or defer permit fees, business regulation fees, and adjust land use permitting processes as legally allowed to facilitate services during this emergency. Altered structures slash uses may be required to be restored to their original configuration once this emergency is over. The city may also adjust, waive, or defer permit fees for building modification or for other purposes for businesses, agencies, and entities that are seeking to respond to this crisis. B, the spending authority of the city administrator is temporarily increased to, to three hundred thousand dollars for emergency preparedness and medication-related expenditures. The temporary increase is in effect so long as the state of emergency continues, and the city council may revoke this authority at any time. C, the city administrator may order additional special regulations and emergency management procedures pursuant to this declaration of a state of emergency and under authority of the Oak Ridge Municipal Code, chapter thirty-seven, subject to ratification of the city council at the first available opportunity. Six, the declaration of emergency and special regulations and emergency measures shall expire May first twenty twenty unless sooner terminated or extended by the city council. The state of emergency may be extended in two week, in two week increments so long as COVID-19 continues to pose immediate and substantial threat to life, safety, health, or property in the city of Oak Ridge. Any extension must be ratified by the city council at a scheduled council meeting. So that is the emergency declaration as it stands. Um, I think rather than ask for a motion, I think I'm gonna ask for discussion. Although if you're okay with asking for an emotion, how many, would you like to discuss this before we ask for a motion? If there's any. I'm looking at heads, no? Okay.
I, well, I, I actually have one thing. I was wondering why it only goes through May first. Um, I, I feel like it should go longer.
Well, it does. That's interesting. I mean, I think it, it could go longer, however, um, you know, it's, I think it's better to have it shorter and then extend it than it is longer and then have to and have to decide when to cancel it, but I'm, I could go six of one half dozen of the other. Um, any other thoughts perhaps? Um, is there, is there a mandated length of time that it has to be? I don't think so. I don't believe there was.
No.
Okay. Right.
Um, Kathy, if we're going into discussion, I have a couple of things as well.
Let, let's talk about this so that we can get the, get it right, so that when we actually go to, to uh, to uh, vote on it, we have the language that we want if there's any changes that we want to make. So Dawn, what were your, what were your concerns?
Um, on five A, I'd like uh, maybe a example scenario of what that's referring to. What, how would that protect us?
Okay, so five A for those people that are listening is the city may adjust, waive, or defer permit fees, business regulation fees, and adjust land use permitting processes as legally allowed to facilitate the services during an emergent, during this emergency. Altered structures or uses may be required to be restored to their original configuration once the emergency is over. The city may also adjust, waive, or defer permit fees for building modification or for other purposes for business agencies and entities that are seeking to respond to this crisis. So, for example, um, in a crisis such as this, if we determined that we had to knock out some walls um, at uh, one of our, one of our public buildings in order to accommodate a large amount of people or to use it for a um, first aid shelter. If we determined that if we, you know, if we made some alteration to a building or put up a temporary structure, um, we could then do that without having to apply for permits, or we could allow, say Orchid Health had something that they needed to do. I know that they have provisions set aside so that they can set up an emergency um, tent behind theirs in case they need to house in place individuals, um, which may or may not require a permit, but if it did, we could waive that permit and waive the fee. Um, so that could be done in an emergency situation, for an example. Perhaps there are others, Brian, that I'm not thinking of right now.
And the same example with Orchid or anybody else, any business that needed to make modifications quickly to accommodate a, whatever the pandemic brought.
Okay, that makes sense. Um, so it wouldn't be for something like a person who wanted to make their house bigger, they could. Yeah, this is just strictly for responding to crisis situation. Okay.
Right, right. And um, and typically when anything like that happens, you know, it has to be documented and and then council would be informed. So, you know, if I decided that the emergency required me to put a new patio out in the back, um, because I want to be able to tell people to come over, I would have to, I would have to answer to all of you at some point. So, there you go.
So actually, something that you mentioned there brings up another question. Does the city itself, if we wanted to do something to one of our buildings, do we normally go through a permit process?
Yes. Yeah, because we have to adhere to the codes of the state of Oregon, and we have to have a permit.
Okay.
Any other questions, guys, that you want to discuss before we put a motion out there?
Um, if nobody else does, I'd like to discuss removing item B from section five. I personally feel like if there was a need to spend a larger amount of money than what's normally allowed, we should be able to call an emergency meeting and meet within twenty-four hours to authorize the expenditure. Um, we're all at home right now, so it's not like we're off traveling. Um, so I, I just don't see a need for letter B.
Um, yeah. That's interesting. Typically, the, the something like this is included in an emergency declaration. I know in the past we've included it because sometimes there's a fast turnaround that has to be done for, you know, either a piece of equipment or whatever. I do, I do appreciate your comments about, you know, we're all, all are here right now and can be reached for an emergency meeting um, without um, without delay, more than likely. Um, I would, I would suggest that maybe what we want to do is rather than strike it, um, uh, authorize uh, an inc- temporary increase of, of an amount of money, but only um, only with the approval of the city council. Um.
Oh, I see. Add in uh, with approval of council that he can spend up to that much.
Mm-hmm. Which means that you're, you are, you know, and I'm sure we all wouldn't mind being woke up in the middle of the night if something happened. Um, I can't anticipate that something would, but I certainly wouldn't mind.
A comment from the C A?
Yes, please.
Uh, well, while the trust is overwhelming, if you're, I wouldn't recommend just uh, council needs to approve it, just strike it altogether, because I can come with, to you with a supplemental budget authorizing that expenditure anyway.
True.
Can I, can I just weigh in real briefly too? This is Matt Dolestrom.
Yes, please, Matt.
So, so my, my fear on that plan that you just laid out, a couple of things in, in just my mindset and putting this in here and then talking to Brian. One fear is uh, deterioration of some mobile network or internet infrastructure such that there would be an emergency for Brian needing to spend money and having a hard time reaching everyone. The second piece to it is the, the middle of the night scenario is still tough. If he's meeting with the city council, meeting in a, in a quotations, as in a, a public meetings law implication, um, I think he would still have to call a meeting if, if it's going to be presented in front of the city council for him to take action and spend money. So you put yourself in a timeline, binding there again.
Right, and emergency meeting is twenty-four hour notice. Um, right now, the city administrator is authorized to spend up to ten thousand dollars without approval. Isn't that correct?
Yes, that is. That is correct. And in, you know, in an emergency situation, ten thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket. But um, you know, it, and maybe what you're, what you're concerned about is the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, I mean, I, I, I think we, I think it's, it is fair, and I would, I would, I would present to council for discussion that um, that whether you whether you have the trust in your, you have in your city administrator to spend ten thousand dollars or three hundred thousand dollars um, uh, assessing his judgment. I think knowing that in an emergency that our city administrator can spend what is necessary to, to um, enact and protect the community, I think, um, I think is important. Uh, three hundred thousand dollars, you know, I, I could, I mean, I, I don't know where you, where that number came from. I think Brian explained to me that the um, cities of Eugene and Springfield did a, an amount that was way greater than that, and so he just pared it down and and he and Matt came up with a, with a number. Um, and I may be wrong, but how that happened, but there it is. Um, I'm comfortable with three hundred thousand. I think, I don't expect it ever to go that high for this kind of emergency that we're in. But I do expect that something could, could reach a hundred thousand dollars very quickly um, if an emergency arose. Um, so I, I'm comfortable with that, but I'm, you know, I'm happy to hear, and I would like to hear from each, each counselor.
I'm comfortable with it also.
How's them going?
Yeah, so my, uh, three hundred thousand, I mean, it's not like he's gonna go out tomorrow and spend that kind of money unless he needs to. He'll probably let us know. But other thing too, look at, maybe he can give us a date weekly on if he has to spend the money and where it's going.
So this is actually specifically for one-time expenditure, isn't that correct?
Oh. No, it's not. It's for the whole duration of the, of this uh.
The whole duration of the emergency, that, that's the, without council permission, three hundred thousand.
Right.
Well, my point would be that if it's an emergency, then creating an emergency declaration, twenty-four hours can mean a matter of life and death. And three hundred thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket compared to what a losses would be um, for not taking some sort of action, uh, and if somebody would have lost their life because of that. Um, and, and again, I think we also go back to the fact that do we trust the city administrator to act prudently? And I'm sure if he was having to do that kind of expenditure, I would imagine that at least the mayor would be alongside um, as that was happening. That would just be my input.
That's true. Um, Counsel, Counselor, um, or Bobby, Counsel Whitney, are you there? How do you feel about this?
Um, I'm fine with it. I'm fine with keeping it as it is.
Okay. Counsel Hollit? Do you have any, any thoughts on this?
Um, so this expenditure um, authorization would only be while the declaration is in place, correct?
Yes, absolutely. And then it goes back to the ten thousand since the declaration is no longer in place, and the expenditure would only have to be, would only be for an emergency piece. It couldn't be like, well, now that I've got this, I can spend three hundred thousand dollars for a, um, you know, a new fleet for the fire department or whatever, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would add, Mayor, Mayor, just add real briefly as well that it's also in the emergency declaration that the council uh, could revoke this authority, and the emergency declaration could continue.
Okay.
I also just want to add really quick too, um, I'm fine with that number. I think that it's important for us to remember too, that some of this stuff can be reimbursable by the federal government, is my understanding.
That's very true. That's very true. Um, which is one of the reasons why we want to declare the emergency so that we can take advantage of any reimbursement. Um, that may or, may or may not come. That doesn't speak to this amount, but it is kind of important, and also so that we can juggle funds around if we needed to um, be able to move funds out in our budget without having to um, to uh, do a supplemental budget ahead of time, and it gives us the flexibility to move things um, in, in an emergency. So.
Can I make one more comment?
Go ahead. Yes, please.
So um, from a, a procurement standpoint, I mean, that's what I did for a living for the last thirty years. Um, there is probably nothing in this world that's available in less than twenty-four hours that could cost up to three hundred thousand dollars. So my point in bringing this up had nothing to do with trust. It had to do with thinking about uh, all the scenarios that could possibly be out there. Okay, let's say we need a whole bunch of masks and gowns and and whatever. Number one, there's no way that's gonna cost that much. So that's not gonna come up. Three hundred thousand could be something like equipment or you know, vehicles, who knows? Um, but you can't get that here. You're not gonna save someone's life by making a three hundred thousand dollar purchase in less than twenty-four hours. So that's all what I was, where I was coming from.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I wanted to say.
I, I appreciate that, and I think sometimes it's harder to think about the broader picture in my mind. You know, when I think of an emergency in this case, you know, uh, if, if for some reason something had, something happened um, and the virus became um, became so virulent that we had to evacuate the community, that's gonna cost you more than three hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, those are, and, and you're right. I mean, I, we don't anticipate that, and, and God forbid that that would happen. But that is a, you know, that is an option. So I appreciate your thoughts, and I appreciate the thoughts of all of the council. Um, if there's no further discussion, can we call, did we do a motion?
Nope.
Thank you. May I call for a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Um, I move that we adopt resolution zero four dash two zero two zero, a resolution declaring a local state of emergency due to the present COVID-19 pandemic.
Bobby, is there a second?
Counsel Forkum, second.
Forkum seconded. Um, any further conversation or discussion?
I do have one more thing. I wanted to point out that we um, we actually don't have an emergency operations plan that's been adopted or approved um, that, that we have access to anyway. I do understand that it's coming. Um, but I just wanted to make mention of that, that we, we need to be able to see that and understand what's, what our plan is.
Counsel, did you get the copy that I forwarded you?
I got the copy that had twenty-five out of a hundred and ninety-four pages.
Okay, that's the draft, which I was counselled to leave it as a draft to prevent us from losing some authority from Lane County. Uh, the other annexes are available. There are three, one in the police department, one in the fire department, one in city hall. You're welcome to come look at them.
Right.
Okay.
Sweet. Um, uh, city administrator, will you call for a vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Counsel Hollit?
Aye.
Thank you.
Counsel Kenyon?
Aye.
Counsel Forkum?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counsel McClellan?
Aye.
Counsel Whitney?
Aye.
Counsel Maxfield?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, counsel. Um, that will be signed promptly, and we will move on to thirteen point two. And uh, Brian?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, thirteen point two, this is a, a third reading of ordinance nine thirty, repealing and replacing chapter thirty of the Oak Ridge Municipal Code. Uh, the proposed council action is a motion to adopt the ordinance nine thirty. Uh, exhibits were the ordinance and the council rules of procedures. Uh, the last, I, I know that you're thinking that you passed this last meeting that we met, but uh, there were some concerns about the, the way it was passed, so we're gonna try to redo this to the satisfaction of council. Um, uh, id- ideally, we want to make two motions. That one is gonna be to approve the reading of the proposed ordinance by title only. Then it will be read, and then we need another motion to adopt ordinance nine thirty. Does that, everyone agree with that method?
I do.
I do.
Okay.
All right.
Where are we standing?
Counsel, can we have the first motion, please?
Um, I move we approve the reading of proposed ordinance nine thirty by title only.
And I will read the, uh, the title. Excellent. Agenda title, third reading of ordinance nine thirty by title only. This is repealing and replacing chapter thirty of the Oak Ridge Municipal Code.
So do we need to um, So do we need to, um, approve that motion before we read the ordinance by title and then move to adopt it?
Yes, we need to make a motion, we need to vote on that reading by title.
Okay. So, all right, call for a vote.
Counselor McClellan?
Aye.
Um, Mayor Holston?
Yai.
Counselor Forkum?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Maxfield?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, um, so the motion that is passed is.
To read by title.
To read, read by title, so the third reading of ordinance nine thirty, repealing and replacing chapter thirty of the Oak Ridge Municipal Code. Um, second motion, uh, counsel, can I have the second motion, please?
I move to, I move with adopt ordinance nine thirty.
I'll second.
Counselor Kenyon seconded, any discussion? Call for a vote.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Forkum?
Aye.
Counselor Maxfield?
Aye.
Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor McClellan?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, counsel, that's been a long time coming, I appreciate that we finally have passed that, hooray, pat yourselves on the back. Um, let's move to, yeah, fourteen point one, yay, Paul. Um, let's move to fourteen point one, this is a consideration to fill the budget committee vacancy, um, Jan, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Ah, there's your sweet voice, thank you for being there and hanging in with us. So this is the Oak Ridge Budget Committee, is seated with seven citizens, currently we have five seats. Um, are filled that are, that leaves two vacancies, we have one application, our applicant is on the line. Um, and there is no fiscal impact, um, our opportunity here is to appoint one applicant to fill this seat. Or to not appoint this applicant to fill this seat. Um, at this time, Jan, um, I will introduce you. And, um, you have filled out your application, all of our counselors have your application in front of us. Um, and I am going to ask that you, um, give us a few words about who you are and why you wanna serve on the budget committee.
Okay, I kinda lost you.
Oh, okay, um, so, if you would just introduce yourself, um, give us your, your name. And, um, then tell us why you would like to serve on the budget committee.
Okay, my name is Jan Hooker, and I, of course, live here. Um, we've been here eleven years, we've seen a lot of change and a lot of different things. I worked at the, I've been retired from the Oak Ridge Police Department as dispatch clerk for five years. I now work, um, or volunteer as secretary treasurer of the Fourth Hill Memorial Park Cemetery here in Oak Ridge. Um, I have some experience in bookkeeping and working with the budget, however, it's not huge budgets like this. Uh, Jerry Shory, the president of the board for the cemetery, and I worked on the cemetery's very first budget in twenty nineteen. So far, so good. And I would like to be on because I think sometimes new eyes can maybe help a little bit. And I also think we need to kinda take part in the city.
Excellent, thank you, Jan, um, counselors, do you have any questions for Jan? Everybody's smiling and that I can see.
I, I know, Jan, I think she's an excellent candidate.
Well, there you go, there you go, um, if there are no, um. Um, if there are no questions, and I don't think I have any questions of Jan, I appreciate Jan that you have put your application in. Um, I would call, I would ask for a motion.
I, I move that we appoint Janice Hooker to serve in the vacant Oak Ridge Budget Committee seat for a three-year term.
A second.
All seconded, that? Um, any other discussion?
Can I say one thing?
Of course you may.
Good, my name is Janice, but only if you're a man.
Okay, we will remember that, Jan. Uh, Brian, will you call for a vote?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, uh, Counselor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Forkum?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor McClellan?
Aye.
Mayor Holston?
Aye.
Counselor Maxfield?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to having you with us as we hammer ourselves through this budget that's coming up, and I know it's going to be delightful. All right.
Ma'am, mayor?
Yes, please.
I don't, looking at the screen, I don't see the candidates for the Public Safety Committee dialed in.
Okay.
It may have something to do with kind of the special meeting and, uh, late notice.
Okay, let's put this on hold. And we will move it on to the next council meeting that we have.
Uh, Brian, I have a question for you, so there's one more vacancy on the budget committee, are those still? Um, open until filled kind of consideration, is that how you're doing all the committee positions?
No, I've been doing it at thirty-day intervals and I'll repost this, but.
Okay.
But considering that the budget committee's starting soon, are you, can we consider doing that one open until filled?
Uh, we can do that, the only problem is they're gonna come in halfway through the cycle, but, which I guess is okay, um, I, I'll, I'll do that if you, if the council would like that.
Uh, can, can I make a suggestion, perhaps we just post it for, um, twenty days, so that it can be.
The budget starts in a week.
Oh, that's right, it's almost the end of the month already, isn't it? Oh, my god.
I mean, you'll have, members, uh.
Well, what I was. I was thinking if we had more applications for the very next council meeting, if we would be able to look at those considering. Um, people get their budget cap, packets on the thirtieth. Is that correct?
Yeah, we could hold it open until the, what is, when is the next council meeting, April fourth, or something like that?
Ninth, I thought.
Nine, um, there, there, trying to find the calendar, April second. Oh, the first Thursday, um.
And when is the next budget committee meeting, March thirty-first, isn't that right?
That's the first one.
Well, that's when they get their packets, but when is the next actual meeting?
Fourteenth of April, fourteenth of April.
Oh, okay.
It sounds like, though, that we're gonna get our packets the day before the first meeting. So is the first meeting gonna be an actual?
It will be the introduction to the budget, you know how they, they hand it, they give you your budget, they give you that introduction. And, um, they have to do that, you know, by O R S, and, um, and then move forward from there. Um, so what if we post it and just say it's open until April first?
Sure.
Can you repost it? I, I, I hesitate to just do an open-ended. Because what happens if someone says, oh, well, I, you know, I didn't know someone put it in, I was gonna put mine in tomorrow. So, I, I just hate to, I'd just like to have it then, you know, so can, Brian, can you post it till April first?
So, uh, post it for a week, okay?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up, Chrissy, I appreciate it. Okay, um, let's move on to fourteen, oh, we can't, sorry. Um, fourteen, but fourteen point two, we're just gonna hold off on, and, uh. So if there are any public, if there are any public out there that would like to comment or to ask a question. Um, now is the time to do that, we will try to do this, um, in an, in, in an organized way. So, um, I guess just speak up, um, and I can recognize you as we hear you. Is there anybody out there? No? Okay, wait, I just gotta, um, no. Anything else? Okay, I'm not hearing anything, did, Brian, are you seeing anything pop up?
I only see, uh, just, uh, one citizen who doesn't, apparently does not wanna speak.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, well, with that, counsel, thank you for participating in this meeting. Um, I'd love to hear your feedback and any positives, and, um. Uh, please, you know, forward them to me, or any issues that you may have had. So that we can, um, continue to meet like this in a way that seems to work pretty well, I mean, I kinda like it. So, stay safe, stay healthy out there, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.